Location will be given to us by Councilmember Cornell and then followed by the regular agenda. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment in prayer can do so by voluntarily standing up. Councilman, you have the floor.
If I can give a praise first, 81st and West Country Road this morning, I would like to extend my thanks to OFR for the achievement that they have done and also jointly to our city manager, John Beckmeyer, also our mayor Javier, and communications Monica for a beautiful job in communicating that to the city and keeping us all informed. Thank you, everyone. Those that would like to join me in prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all that are gathered here today. I pray for this assembled council and for the city of Odessa this afternoon. We acknowledge you in all of our meetings so that you can direct our paths. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen. You may be seated. Everyone in the back row, can they hear us? Is that audible? Can you hear us in the back row? Yes, no, can I have an amen? Thank you. We're going to move on to item three, Discover Odessa Quarterly Report Update. Ms. Martz?
Hello, council. Great to see you guys.
Did you buy that cap or did you get it?
I am wearing a marketing item for my department that markets the city of Odessa. I hope you see that you've got some goodies up there and we'll get to that in the presentation. Great to see you guys this morning. Thanks for giving me your time. We'll start. Our first page is the quarterly report for April through June of 2024. You'll see our new logo branding and colors there, which we'll talk about later. Let's see, we'll move on to page two. This has a great just snapshot of our quarter with the total economic for impact for the month of April, May, and June, as well as total groups assisted, total attendees, and then total hotel nights. And you'll see that each of those are broken down based on the event types. We have meetings, special events, and sports. It's great to see that we had over 3,000 total hotel nights and over 45,000 total attendees for this quarter. If we move on to page three, we have specifically the groups that we assisted in each month. Those are divided up with different colors to kind of help you quickly see the sporting events, the special events, and then the meetings. And what you've noticed, we changed it up a little bit. A couple of the events have an asterisk by them and that lets you know that that event happened more than once and it tells you how many times that happened at the end, but it kind of keeps this page a little cleaner. We'll move on to page four. A lot happening here, but these are upcoming groups and events that have already been booked by our fantastic sales team. And you'll see that we've got some booked out to May of 2026. Moving to page five, we've got our digital marketing campaigns that happened in this quarter. Top left there, you see our social media growth. Social media is very important in our industry and our marketing and communication specialist is doing a great job there. We've got a really great group of followers, which again, it's how they find our city, how they find things to do when they come to our city and we're very happy with it. We've got great top performing posts. It was pointed out that those posts are a little small for you guys to see and we're going to work on that next time so you can really see which one of those, the engagement and the interaction that happened on those top performing posts. Our Insider e-newsletters doing great. Our kiosk that we have at the Marriott Convention Center is doing very good. I will share that we have a software update coming for that kiosk. If you've been there lately and you've seen any issues with it, it was due for a software update and that's happening this week. Our local Insider blogs, you see those top three featured blogs. I'll share, one of the reasons that our blogs are so important, search engine optimization. When people jump online and look for things to do, they look for certain words. They type in things to do, or they type in outdoor things to do, or they type in places to eat and those blogs really help bring in specific engagement that people are looking for. You see that best coffee spots, that one's a big one. Then we have our website performance there on the right, top visited pages. You'll see how many users and new users and page views happen on our website. Something I thought was interesting was that our top user age group is age group between 25 to 34. So that tells me that I'm not in that group anymore and so I need to listen to some of my team when they are designing this website because that's the age group that is coming to our website. Let's see, we'll move on to page six. This lists places that we have advertisements. We have digital advertisement on the left and print advertisements on the right. You'll see that most of them are in our old logo and our older format. We did get one in there with the new logo at the end of the quarter as that was just being launched. So our advertisement with Texas Monthly, digital advertisement on the left, had really great impressions and engagement. Texas Monthly was very encouraged by how well people engaged with that. So I'm really looking forward to the campaign that comes next with some of our new branding for Texas Monthly.
How long are they engaging in those impressions? Are you keeping track of the?
How long they're there?
So they're hitting, they're engaging on these right here, right? Right below it?
Right, on page six.
Yeah, so how long have they been, are you measuring how long they're on there?
I don't, I don't see that written here, but I believe in some of our website analytics, we can look that up. I know that we, you know, if you go back to page five, just on our socials, you can see percentage of engagements and such, but I don't necessarily see a time period. So I'll look into that. It's probably a question for my communication specialist on the back row who is excited to come on up here.
It helps because if you, you know, it helps in how you wind up advertising, you showing the engagement, you know. So if it's something like a video or the engagement for two seconds, three seconds, 12 seconds, stuff like that, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
And the biz, they call that how sticky it is.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to page seven, which does list our new Discover Odessa logo and website. We launched the website at the end of this quarter. The new logo officially went off July 11th. But you'll see our primary logo there to the left is very simple and clean. Then we have our supporting logos that have some shadow, also have some just different elements. And the idea there was to really find every way we can to get the word out about who we are and what we do. And we left some things on your desk because, you know, these are things that visitors look for. They look for those stickers. They look for products that they can represent the city that they were in. And we were discussing the fact that when we travel to a city, we almost always come back with a sweater that just says, you know, Florida, or it says Orlando on it. So we're really working on some of that engagement. We loved our color palette and those desert night blue, that cosmic cowboy blue, that cactus gold, desert sage, and Caliche white really speaks to who we are. There was a lot of thought invested in these logos and this branding. It wasn't just, it sounded good. We really, really did a lot of work and I'm very proud of it. Page eight shows our team highlights and these are all of the meetings and events that we participated in as a team in this quarter and then a total of 617 total sales calls. Our sales team's working very hard to bring more meetings and events to our city. The last page I have for you here is our SERP program, which is a sports event recruitment program. And you'll see the amount granted has been over $74,000 with about 25,000 remaining. I will share, you see those last four events on the right that were awaiting sports committee votes at the time of this printing. They were waiting. But we do now know that the Women's West Texas Golf Association has been awarded about $4,000. And then the North Texas PGA Golf Tournament, the last one listed there is about $3,800, which brings our remaining balance just over $17,000 and we're working real hard to give that out before this fiscal year's up and then of course, get to give what's coming next. That's all I have on my presentation. I did want to share that we have, we have just had a conversation with Sports Destination Management Magazine and it's a magazine that we've not been in for a while here at Discover Odessa and we're getting back into. And we will advertise, kind of tell our story this round, so we'll be ready as the sports complex comes out to really hit that and we're looking forward to it. And then to share, our team will travel to Austin next month to TACBB Annual Meeting, which is the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus. We always have lots of great information and education about what's happening in the DMO and CVB world. Do you guys have any questions for me?
How many, how many participants did we have in the, the girls softball tournament that we, we attended? Was it about two, two weeks ago?
Right, we did. Mm-hmm, it was, it was great. We did 700 bags for the players and so I know that that, we gave out about that many.
And then two parents average?
Correct, correct. I mean, we were there and we had parents and kids and siblings, you know. That specific tournament, I was at Walmart that weekend and saw a mom coming in with her kiddo fully decked out, you know, looking for something. So, and then I saw another vehicle sitting outside of Wingstop, you know, so there was a lot happening.
Yeah, there was a lot going on. There was a lot. The man in the place was just gang packed.
It was great.
It was incredible. And so I think we're on rotation every three years.
Three or four, yes, sir. And I feel like that it might have got skipped here one year, but this year was a great success and they were looking forward to coming back.
So we definitely, our next go around there should be at the complex.
Love it. Cause that, that barn we were at was a little, little sweaty.
It was a little warm.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was good. It was a good turnout. I really appreciate you guys being there. Look, you guys represented Odessa very, very well.
Thank you.
And now that we've got some cool merch, is there any way we can get it sold back at the airport?
You know, I love that you asked that, Mr. Mata. We're actually in conversations about what that looks like. We, you know, want to discuss, in order to start, we would, would we use our budget money to start and then replace that initially. Our goal is to have it available. Because right now, if you were going to buy Odessa merch, where would you go? Airport or the grocery store? And we'd love to have it in some of the downtown boutiques. You know, we'd love to have it if we had a visitor center at some point, you know, some really great ideas. But we are in talks about what that looks like. Thank you.
And then I also noticed too, this is, I don't know if it's always been like this, I just noticed it for the first time on the second page.
Yeah.
The economic impact by group, that special events eclipse sports, which is, I think it's great. I mean, sports is going to always be here. That's, we have a lot of sports functions here. But it's great that we're also getting a lot more special events coming.
Yes, you know, our group sales specialist really works on, you know, she goes after associations and groups that a lot of people don't know about if you're not a part of that association and that's what she's working on.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that I've visited your shop and it's impressive. Everything is so well organized and there's a lot of hard work that goes out on that. I have a question or maybe a suggestion, just on one figure to give perspective and that would be the total economic impact, because this is reporting on April, May, and June.
Yes, sir.
One figure would be interested in a future report, just, just my opinion, would be to have that projected from 2023, the same quarter, so that we can see where we're going.
I like that.
What I see here, the office is busy.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see where we're going.
I love that and we'll definitely take that into account.
Hey, would you have your group in the back stand up because they are high fiving and everything back there?
That back row is doing great work. Appreciate y'all. Y'all want to wave to everybody? They are so good at what they do.
They're acting shy, but I've seen them at the event.
They smile at the event too. Well, thank you guys very much. Any other thoughts or questions?
Council, any other further questions? Great report, good job.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to item four, discuss awarding automotive tires. Mr. Adams?
Mayor, council, this past June, we put out a request for bids for tire contract. We received three bids, one from Bill Williams, one from Forest Brothers, and one from Southern Tire Mark. Bids were opened, the committee was assembled, and all the items were graded and discussed. And by unanimous decision from the committee, we would like to award the bid to Forest Brothers.
Council, any questions?
It's various prices for the different categories. Category one will be $56,682. Category two, $33,300. Category three, $10,568. And category four is $95,382.
So at the end of the year, after a full 12-month, then there'll be another?
We will be able to, we can either submit it for a request for bids again, or we can extend the contract. I believe it's one year more or two years. And just so you know, when we did take tires back into our hands, we went from spending a little over $100,000 a month, we're down to 30,000 to 40,000 now.
Good, good. Well, I appreciate, we kept it local. Big deal.
Chris, I have a question. This is the first time I've ever seen this. You have, well, it's the page, bid evaluation, recommendation, and summary, basis of award. So you have a rating system here, criteria rated, value zero to five points, five being the highest.
Yes.
Number one, and their score was 91%, 34% over the, the next one was at nine and five and it's consistent around across the board.
We went with the best value for the city. Not the least price, but the best value.
Okay, okay.
And just to note, Forest Brothers came in, they bid exactly on the items that were on the bid. The other two companies came in and substituted over half of the items in every category.
Give us an example that we can be aware of, we get questioned with this when we talk best value. Give us, give us something.
Billing, local business, and supply and availability. Forest Brothers, they're normally, when we place an order for tires, they're delivered within 24 hours. I've never had any dealings with Bill Williams. Southern Tire Mark, it would be up to 48 to 72 hours at times. And their billing was less than desirable.
So you use a matrix, a kind of a formula based on that?
Yes, sir.
Took out the personality?
They got the personality. It was completely impartial committee.
Okay, well, good. That gives us something. It gives us some content. That way, you know, when we're asked, we're able to speak about it, not just, you know. But yet, I was looking at this, it's, you know, it is consistent across and by huge margin, that's why I needed to ask.
Council, we have any other questions?
The, just a little bit, the, what Chris touched on though, is something that we got into and talking to people that have been gone for a while has always been a problem. This substitution, when you order a BF Goodrich, you expect a BF Goodrich, not a Cooper. Nothing against Cooper, I run some, they separate, but that's huge. And the fact that Forest Brothers is coming in and saying, this is what you're asking me to bid on, this is what I'm bidding on, that's huge. This whole tire thing seems like a small thing, but he went through about $1.8 million right there. And it's a huge savings. It's really one of our successes over the last year that Chris has put in.
It is.
That's, that's big. And the fact that they're local is just the cherry on top.
Chris, we really appreciate it, you know, came in here baptized by fire. You've got, you've got us through, you've gotten this thing stringed out and we continue and I, I like the systems. It's really good. I don't think I've ever seen anything so thorough as far as when it came into this type of situation, when we came in with the tires.
Council, any further discussion, comments? Mr. Adams, really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item five, discuss the MOUDD budget for fiscal year 2024, '25 as related to the city's contribution to this organization. Ms. Amanda?
A quick note before we get started, somebody's birthdays today too.
Not mine. Thank you, it is.
29?
29 forever. So I'll pass these out just here in a minute when Kayleen comes up. But we have Kayleen, she's a general manager of MOUDD Easy Rider. Many of you know her. We have some council members who are on the board and serve in that capacity. So they will be going over their budget request for this upcoming year and she can explain a little bit more on the details, but essentially, a large majority of their funding comes from, you know, federal and state monies. And then the cities of Odessa and Midland are also contributors in equal amounts to their budget. And so they have put together their budget for the upcoming year and she'll be going through it with you. And I'll give you your copy so you can follow along with her. So I'll welcome Kayleen up to the podium.
Thank you, Kaylee. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for taking the time to consider Easy Rider's budget request for this coming fiscal year. And I want to start off by thanking the city of Odessa for its continued support of our public transit system. We provide trips to generally between 8,000 and 10,000 riders in Odessa per month. And so that really makes a difference in a lot of lives. Last year for fiscal year 2024, the city of Odessa contributed $680,000 toward the Easy Rider budget. And this year, we're bringing to you a request for an increase of $50,000 for a total budget request of $730,000 and that represents about a little over a 7% increase. As you'll see in the handouts, wages and benefits comprise the, the majority of that. We've been working very hard over the last few years to get particularly driver wages to a place where they're competitive in the market and we think we were able to hit that last year with your help. And so this year, we're just looking to, to provide reasonable increases to help keep up with the cost of living and that sort of thing. I won't go over line by line detail unless anybody's interested in getting into, into any of that in particular. But I would just note that as we're looking to increase wages a little bit, we're attempting to balance out the budget by decreasing some of our materials and supplies, budget items based on savings that we're seeing over the last 12 months in those areas. And so as we looked at putting together the budget this year, we saw that we weren't spending as much in certain areas and so we were able to transition some of that. And as a result, we're not looking to increase our requests this year by, by as much as we did last year. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Council, any questions?
I have a question. And doing some research on EDCs and what they can fund and not fund, can't they, can that EDC, couldn't our ODCs is a type A?
I was going to ask that question, but we have the president here, he was going to, president of the Easy Rider Board. And it was a question, we had discussed it about talking to the ODC and that's a possibility because it's transportation, so.
Yeah, because they clearly listed here.
You got any information on that?
I, I did. I was actually just on the phone before I walked into here. I talked, I talked with Mr. Crowe with ODC. He has just gotten word back from the attorney that ODC cannot fund, was directly the stipulation. He's going to send me, send me an email with some information on that with some more directions, but I don't have that yet. As soon as I get that, I can forward that over, but yes.
You're also a member of the ODC Board.
Yes, sir.
So I know that you wanted to be able to speak to Mr. Moore. Were you able to ever get that access? Or did you have to go through the president?
I have not. I went through, I went through Mr. Crowe on that.
Was that, was that the direction by Mr. Crowe to go through that direction?
This seems to contradict what's listed on the type A projects.
That's, that's my question and I would, I'd like to see us have a, have a more in-depth chat on that. I'd like to see what he comes back with. Like I said, I just, I mean, I got off the phone probably five minutes before I walked up here, so I don't have the information yet. But as soon as I see it, he said he's got some specifics from Mr. Moore. As soon as I get that, I will shoot that over to you.
Do you have, if you don't mind me asking this, how the question was posed? Did you pose the question? How was the question posed? Do you have any?
I posed the question because what I looked up in, in our, in the funding metrics and with the type A corporations, one of the things that it mentions is transportation projects and transportation systems. And my broad overview and looking at that as just a general member of the public and like I said, I'm not an accountant and I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer. But looking at that, when it says transportation system, transportation system seems like that would apply to something like Easy Rider pretty, pretty hard and heavy. However, that's not what was indicated back. How, once we get that, once I see what Mr. Moore has said, let's, let's talk about that because I think we need to open up that dialogue and conversation. I'd like to see that more or see more detail on that. As soon as we see that, I think that that's a, that's a conversation we all really need to have.
I look forward to, we'd like to be able to see that information and have that discussion.
Mayor, I'm sick and tired of this ODC Chris Crowe guy turning around everything. We all read, we all can read, we all, you know, we all have reading abilities and we can read these things and what they say. And he's even gone so far as to send our attorney an email that we as a council should not directly talk to Mr. Moore. And, you know, I'm sorry, I'm sick and tired of ODC getting in the way of progress for Odessa. There's ways to do things and ways not to do things. And every time we ask ODC for something, it goes south. There's a reason not to do it. And that's not their purpose. This council's responsible for the monies collected by ODC. Quite clearly, I saw where Mr. Crowe made a statement last week in an op-ed that ODC is fiduciary of those monies and he's not. Y'all are not, not you, but ODC's not.
I'm trying.
This council, this council, they're responsible for those monies. It's taxpayer money. And so I just about had enough. I'm tired. We've got a lot of needs. This is another one of those. The ODC's sitting on a $90 million uncommitted balance. It's something they could do very easily. Wouldn't cost them a bunch of money, but, you know, I'm on my soapbox, sorry there. I've been sitting here four years fighting to get stuff done through ODC and it doesn't work. And I'm just, that's my two cents worth. Because I read the same thing Mr. Mata reads, you know. I've only got one degree, but, you know, I do have one and I can read.
Same thing. I've got, I've got, I've got one degree and I'm the same way. It's not accounting, accounting, but I'm learning, picking it up real quick.
We would really be interested in that conversation and being able to get that information and we'd be able to pose a question.
There's big things that are coming, coming for, for Easy Rider as well. One of the things that we've talked about is we'd like to see the routes expand somewhat. One of the big things is the Collin Ride up north that is, is very important to that community. Longdale North Park is my community. That's where I live. But we've got a, we've, we've got, Odessa Housing Finance Corporation has their apartment complexes right there. Also got another big apartment complex there and there's a need. We have people up there that talk about it. It's, it gets talked about, about the community groups through Longdale and all over the place. And man, we really wish we could get on a bus here. And having that ability, part of that, part of that money is part of that, as far as we talked about that Collin Ride at one point in time. So that's, that's important and where those matches come from. Just kind of going into, I'll, I'll throw a little more on Kaylee's.
As budgets within the city become more tight and tied and we need to invest more into infrastructure.
Absolutely.
I know this is something that we discussed on the board about the opportunity to ask that question. You know, we discussed it as an Easy Rider Board. If we could pose a question? You know, we discussed it as an Easy Rider Board, if we could pose a question and see if this was available, because I think everybody walked away with saying, well, you know, this is the way we read it, and this is the way we understood it, because we should have.
It looks pretty clear.
Yeah.
But we'll see where it goes.
No, I get it, and but, yeah, I just wanted to pose the question, if you had the ability to be able to speak to Moore yourself?
I have not talked to him myself.
Or did I have to go through a process?
I'm waiting on the email, and I just checked my email a second ago while I was up here. I was looking at my email to see if anything has come through. I've not seen one yet.
I appreciate that.
As soon as I get it, I will let you guys know.
That was the response I was looking for.
So, Mr. Crowe, I've got one more question.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about north, which is Councilman Canal's district up north?
Yes, sir.
Where you're talking about?
So, this made me just think, I don't think that the routes go through Parks Bell. I don't know, do they not?
No, they don't currently.
See, and there's 5,000 people living up there.
And you've also got an Odessa Housing Finance Corporation new apartment complex there that's, that's that same, the same type of housing there?
Exactly. I mean, this need is growing, big time, as our, as our city grows.
Yes, sir.
And let me just read this. This is from the Texas Comptroller's website, just so it can be on record here. It just says, "EDCs may use Type A revenue to fund land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure and improvements for projects, including," let's put some bullet points, and it says here commuter or light rail or commuter bus operations.
That seems pretty clear.
It's pretty clear, but we will, rest assured, we will get 100% clarification on this for you guys, because we do have a huge need in Odessa for, to expand Easy Rider, so.
And to be honest with you, when we make that match there, Midland has to do the same amount that we do according to the bylaws of MOUD. So, that will also, Midland will also be expanding their site, too. I know they wanted to do a little more last year than what we ended up doing, but, you know, they're excited about expanding the bus system in Midland because we're doing it. It's a community, it's a community operation between both of us, and we both, this is kind of a split. It's a really unique board to be on.
Yes.
And a really unique operation, so.
Well, they're gonna, Mr. Crowe's gonna tell you that they're a Type B, ODC, and they're not. They're Type A as well.
Yep.
So, you know, that argument doesn't fly anymore. I've heard that for the last four years as well.
So.
Has Midland already, are they, have they already matched, or have they met that?
I don't.
Met yet?
Have we met with Midland yet?
We have not. We sent our budget request over to them, but I haven't gotten any feedback from them yet.
See, last year when we discussed it, we had Councilman Corales, and because of our situation that we're, felt that we were going blind into, you know, which is this year's budget, there was, I think the request was 350. We wind up doing half of that, if I recall.
At least so, yes, sir.
And the reason why, and I basically told the board that I could, I couldn't guarantee, but I could probably reassure that we could, in all probability, do the lower portion, but because we had so many unknowns in the budget. I knew Midland was ready to do it, and I talked to Corales, and I said, look, these are our budget constraints. It's basically, we're blind right now. We really don't know where we really are, and so, we need to do, we really need to get a clear picture. I said, let's be conservative, let's just do half. We can always come back and amend it if we need to. I said, but please help us out, and that's what we did. So, you know, this 50 that they're requesting is very modest, but it is also catching up what we really needed to do last year. But, you know, they, they listened, they said, okay, we'll do that, you know, they honored our request, and I think we're feeling more confident this year in what we can do.
And this team has been incredible with MOUD as far as being stewards of that money and doing a very good job with it. It's been incredible to see what's gone on with everything going on through MOUD.
We have Ms. Banda as one of our board members, and she's doing so well, she's running the numbers for us, so.
She's pretty awesome.
Yeah, it's good, it's a good team. Anything else? Any further discussion, comments? Anything else you'd like to add? All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great job. We're going to move on to item six, discuss a claim filed by Images Inc., Images Inc., located on downtown Odessa for the damage of the roof result of the recent holiday fireworks. Ms. Griffin, you're just full of good news today, aren't you?
Counsel, I'm just coming before you to share some details in the event that we have to make a decision with regard to payment. We contracted with Rich Fire LLC to, for the firework display, and unfortunately, our fire inspectors noticed that the droppings from the fireworks were still burning when they hit the ground, and the building that was near where the displays were being held received some damage, actually holes in the roof, in the roof, and they have filed a claim with us. Now, we, Rich Fire, we require that they have insurance. We have actually filed a claim with his insurer, Nationwide, to pay for the roof. They have given us a little bit of pushback, but they did have an inspector come out today.
Is that who was out there today?
Yes.
I saw Barry out there.
Yes. And we also had three roofers to come out and give us a quote to take a look as well. All three said that the roof needs to be replaced.
Of course they did.
Yeah. But we've only received written quote from one of them. The other two said that they wanted to wait and see what Nationwide's adjuster would have to say before they would submit a quote. But basically, that cost could be somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $90,000 if we have to replace the roof. Fortunately, we do have a little bit of money in another account that we may be able to pay for it if we have to, but we are right now pressing Nationwide to take care of it.
As you should. We all asked about that. I asked about that, you know, I immediately lined up, beginning to call from the owner, and then, and then one of these, I said, and then that's when we, we were already on it. So, I saw it, I saw some, I just saw some of the pictures. Did we have any damage into the insulation?
Well, actually, there is moisture under when they, from where they could see, there's quite a bit of moisture, and so, what we did have the owner do is to at least cover the holes. So, the original roofer came out and did that so that we wouldn't experience, they wouldn't experience more damage as a result of water and rain.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, any, well, the adjuster came out?
The adjuster came out today, and so, what will happen is that adjuster will submit her report back to Nationwide, and then we should hear from them at that point.
Okay. Well, good. That's what the insurance is for. Next year, we do $2 million?
Yeah.
And we're looking for another location.
Yes, for sure.
Next year, we have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, well, yes, true.
Yeah.
And we will be looking for a new location.
Yes.
That was a question I had, that Rich Fire was hired by the city and not Navarro Group.
That's correct. Actually, we hired Rich Fire, not Navarro Group.
So, Mr. Jones, can you, I'm a little bit confused about this one paragraph about contract and our attachment, city performance agreement. So, can you explain that to me? I'm not really sure I understand that.
What page are you on?
I'm on the, just the description of what, RM Contract Rich Fire Works Display Vendor Insured, insured to file a claim with receives assistance from Nationwide. A city-based statement in Rich Fire LLC's contract forms the city, the client assumes all associated risk, property, and personal injury as a result of the display. The city did not sign the vendor's contract, but rather executed the city's performance agreement and included the vendor's contract as an attachment. That's what it says here.
Yeah, but I believe that would be correct. We did our own performance agreement, and actually, that was the proposal, we attached that as a proposal.
That is.
I just, I'm sorry, I'm not, you're gonna have to.
Do you mind if I?
Yeah, let's dumb it down some for me, so.
Yeah, so.
Because this is legally.
Okay, so, yes, so the vendor, the vendor's contract was attached. We usually attach a statement of work, but this contract, they'd include the statement of work, but it also included their terms and conditions. We have a statement in our performance agreement that states that our agreement supersedes. So, whatever was in their agreement, it becomes null and void. Now, this is what they came back to us initially with, because Rich Fire had provided them Nationwide only that contract. And so, when they responded to me to say that they were going to revert back to the city, said, wait a second, our contract supersedes that.
Thank you.
So, we're waiting to hear.
That's where the pushback is. But it's getting from Nationwide, they're saying, no, you're responsible, and we're saying, we just did that as a statement of work. They signed our contract, our contract says they carry insurance and they're responsible.
We're not liable. I would think so.
My money's riding on the lady standing in front of us.
I understand, she understands it very well, so I just.
Yeah, and Christina and I in legal have talked about going forward, what we will do to make sure that that doesn't occur again.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll just keep working with the city manager, and he'll keep us updated on this as it progresses.
We have, we're not going to be in this situation again.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Then we also, we also had, and cringed on it. Item seven, discuss approving the purchase of the aerator replacement parts for the Bob Darrington Water Reclamation Plant. Mr. Niles?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel.
How you doing, sir?
Good, good. We're seeking your approval to allocate budgeted funds in the amount of $90,212 for replacement parts for two main aeration basins at the Bob Darrington Water Reclamation Plant. These replacement parts will ensure consistent operation of the plant. These parts include mechanical parts and disc blades for the aerators. And this was already in our this year's budget.
Yes, and I'm an immediate, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what's the, give me the basic, how much longer, I mean, I know this just pushes it down the road, we both know that, but.
This keeps things maintaining.
You just, I understand that, so. Your beard's getting grayer, by the way.
Yes.
I think it says Darrington down the side of it, I'm not sure. So, anyway, but, I guess this is going to be the norm for a while.
Correct, correct.
It's part of that rehab.
Yeah.
Counsel, do we have any discussion on the, on item seven as presented?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Niles, because it's you that are out there that's finding what needs to be replaced, getting the beds.
It's my team, honestly.
Getting it approved, bringing it in.
Yeah, it's my team, honestly, so.
Keep us running.
Yep.
It's all I ask.
Yeah. Okay, we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and move on to item eight, discuss your approval of the purchase of the valves and actuators for the water treatment plant. Mr. Niles?
Again, Mayor, Counsel, so we're seeking your approval to allocate budgeted funds for the amount of $181, $590 to replace multiple valves and Venturies and actuators at the water treatment plant. We're looking, we're looking to replace effluent valves on filter seven through 11. The current effluent valves are a one-piece system with the Venturi attached. We're looking at replacing with a more efficient, cost-effective option that will separate these at that point of contact. With the valves having long-lived their expectancy, about 10 to 20 years, we're starting to see these systems fail. We're also wanting to replace our actuators at the water main filters, which include the air scour, backwash, and effluent valves. Three of the plant filters have been replaced with the upgrade as it is now, and they have proven to be efficient. Our current actuators have been in place since the water plant was built. These replacement parts were not included in the current water treatment plant upgrade.
Okay, so you, you've got the money in the account?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion?
Ditto my comment on seven, as it applies to eight.
All right. Seeing, do we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and move forward, sir, and put it on the agenda and get this thing approved.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item nine, update on fentanyl and discuss appointing others on the committee. Councilmember Swonar?
Yes, I just wanted to give everybody an update. We have been meeting since last September as a committee, me and Councilman Canal, as well as Matt Davidson, Fire Chief, and some others. The goal was a small group of us, ended up being a smaller group of us. Three of the members that were appointed to that committee have not been able to meet. So, as moving forward, we were asking maybe if this committee would be a broader spectrum, and if each appointee would want to appoint somebody, or if you would leave it to the committee, but we feel like somebody from the hospital district, school, school district, we need to broaden our horizons. And just wanted to give an update. We have handed out lots of literature since October. We attended the trunk-or-treat and reached over 1,000 individuals that night, passing out literature explaining the dangers of fentanyl poisoning. And we had another event at the open house for the fire department at Central. So, we've basically been having quarterly events reaching the public, and the committee has come to conclusion, this is bigger than just the committee, and so, we wanted kind of some direction on how y'all wanted to move forward. We've done some videos. We haven't spent a whole lot of money, and we have some Narcan that's on order, that's going to be our biggest expense, and we're going to hand that out to families as the families need it or in need of it, and make sure our officers and the fire department have it. I'll have to thank Greg. He has done multiple events in the absence of me if I'm busy doing another event, and so, he's been really good, but we just wanted to bring it to y'all, give you an update. We haven't received the additional $600,000, but we still have probably $160,000 left in the account, so we just need to make a bigger reach.
I was going to ask that question, where were you on that, the rest of the allocation? Where were you with monies that we had received, and where were you with the rest? You know, that was coming, you had, any indication?
We haven't had any indication of when the rest has come, and we just know that it will come.
Okay. Have the faith.
As are the committee members that are attending, yourself, Mr. Canal.
Yeah, Officer Davidson, Chief, our Fire Chief, Chief Cotton, who's not here today, and then our assistant city manager, Christina. Monica is our communications, has done a fantastic job. We've done Spanish videos, we've done regular videos. It was Michelle from the 111 project, but she's got a lot going on, and she hasn't been able to attend as much. And then we had two other that haven't been able to attend. So, it's really been city, city staff that have been attending, and me and Councilman Canal, and so, and we do have a bigger vision for the community. As, as we move forward, we want to be able to continue to educate the public, and so, Officer Davidson's had some really good suggestions on moving forward, and we just feel like we need to have somebody from the, not necessarily hospital board or school board, but maybe somebody in the hospital world, somebody in the school district.
Sounds like you guys got it worked out already.
There's a, another little, another little twist to that, too, because the pamphlets that were put together, last time was a little bit on protection from gangs, but it also included fentanyl, primarily is the fentanyl. But it's a, it's a beautiful setup, because OPD provides like little footballs that sit out on the tables, the kids see them, they're bringing their parents to the table. Soon as they, soon as they're coming up to get the gift, then we're around getting that pamphlet into the hand of the parent and explaining the importance of it, and also to share that with friends. But it's, it's a real feel-good, it's a, it's a very positive move.
Well, I'm for letting the committee pick up the additional members.
Okay, that's, we just want a direction, what the council would like.
Because the last thing we need is another committee, and we need to find people to serve.
Help, yeah.
Ms. Swonar, you mentioned the school district. Within the school district, and I'm sure you're aware of it, they have what they call the Student Assistance Services Counseling Group.
Yes.
I would recommend that the director of that program at the central office be contacted.
Yeah, that number?
456-001.
Just in case you're wondering.
I can get with you and get her name and information.
857-8309.
Well, see, they deal with young people that are faced with crises, and to me, drug situations is a crisis.
Well, I will tell you, our vision for this is moving forward, is maybe, at the end of the day, it becoming a nonprofit, because the money will run out, and we still need to continue to educate. So, moving forward, we need a bigger vision and people involved that can carry that vision. Obviously, we're all not always going to be on council, and so, it's something we want to continue to educate the public on.
And see, every year, they sponsor that red ribbon campaign.
Yeah.
That goes back to 1985, you know, Kiki Cumberin and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Well, good. So, my, my question was on the, was on the Narcan, and I think you've already answered it, but it looks like to me that maybe, I mean, I know you already, probably already thought about this, but are, is a Narcan available at all the schools, on, on campuses, in case something happens? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so it is available at the schools. One thing that come up, we were gonna actually pass it out at Firecracker Fandango. We had a little bit of issue ordering, giving it out, and then Officer Davidson had some really good point. You just don't want to hand it out to everybody. And so, we need to have some kind of control on that. So, we, we have ordered, you wanna? Oh, yay.
Right, right. That's good.
Mayor, Council.
I'm sorry, you didn't, you didn't expect that, but I saw you. I was like, man, come on up.
Is this one?
Yeah. Yeah, we ordered a hundred and fifty boxes through Amazon. What we were kind of thinking, kind of like our Teddy Bear program, if we go to a poisoning event.
Yeah.
I wanted to say something else. If we go to a poisoning event and there's family loved ones there, and we bring them back, we could leave them with Narcan that might could save their life in a future event that prepares them to continue this, you know, adventure they're on with their loved one, trying to get over the, this fentanyl crisis that we're all dealing with. And of course, you know, at these events, we'll have Narcan available to somebody. If they come and express they're dealing with this with their child, we should have it on hand that we could hand it out. But right now, like I said, it's just a hundred and fifty boxes. So, it's readily available at pharmacies everywhere, and the hiccup in ordering was I was kind of looking at it as a law enforcement purpose, which we would get a discount for, but this isn't really a law enforcement. This is a community purpose, so it's a mixed government purchase. So, it was at full price at forty-five dollars a box, which has two doses in it. It's just a little box, but it has two inhalers in it.
Is that the Narcon?
Yes, sir.
Well, I just think that it'd be best for the committee to stay, keep control. You have the vision. Strategically, go find other committee members that fit and will buy into the vision, and that will be in there for the long term. And I think you're absolutely right. There needs to have a longevity in the community.
Yes.
Because this is not going away.
No.
If anything else, it's gonna expand.
Correct.
And we need to really cast a wider web, a wider net to be able to keep informing more and more and more, and find a way to ever be to self-sustaining through, through, you know, finding monetary support. So, city's here to support in any way we can, but I just think it'd be best, let the committee be self-sustaining. You guys, if you guys have a plan, you know, you want to pick, go for it. You just have the, I would, I'm not trying to speak for the council, but you know, but then we have, you guys have our blessing to go ahead and just go forward.
We just wanted to put that out there in front of everybody, so it wasn't as making the decision.
Would you happen to have the current statistics of how many of our local youth have died from fentanyl usage?
No, no. I mean, it has slowed down here locally compared to last year and years past. I don't know if that's because of more education or more people are aware of it, but the numbers have reduced, but it's still a problem.
Well, we just got hit with one over the weekend. We were due to go to Del Rio, and everybody had to go to San Antonio. I had one, a twenty-five-year-old cousin pass, pass away from the poisoning tube. And so, you know, it just continues to hit every family, and so this is really, really important for us to continue.
To answer your question also, so I've talked to the police department and our fire department. So, when they get a phone call, I mean, it doesn't really say if it's poisoning or an overdose, so we just pick them up. We take them to the hospital, and the hospital does their thing. We, we really don't see the outcome of what happened. So, it's hard, I think, to get statistics on, you know, how many overdosed, or was it accident, or did it intentionally. Hopefully, I mean, not many are doing it intentionally, but there are some that are, are playing with, with drugs, and, and then they overdose. So, on our end, it's kind of hard to track, and so that might be a good thing to have somebody from the hospital, because they may have more, be able to tap into that, but our resources aren't able to tap into that. We take the nine-one-one call and, and we take them in and, and try to help them, and.
And they will have a lot that are unreported to us, or OFR, the walk-in, stuff like that.
I just want to commend all of you for being advocates. I've had personal, like the mayor said, I've had personal family members in the past that died because of poisoning and drug overdose, whatever, and so that's near and dear to my heart, what you all are doing. So, thank all of you that you mentioned a while ago. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no more business before the city council, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilmember Swannor have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Vasquez are in favor indicating the same act.
Aye.
Close opposing, indicating same side. Motion passed, you may as we are adjourned. We'll see at six o'clock.